We're doing a show.
All right. Well, good morning. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Wednesday, June 30th of 2021. Where did June go so fast? It's 9:00 AM. We're here in the Senator Hearing Room, 555 Court Street. And as always, we start with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you will join us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it spans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we even get into anything, we've got a couple of items we need to add to the agenda. So Commissioner Bethel, would you like to make those motions?
I make a motion to add the action agenda under Board of Commissioners. Consider approval of an order ending the declared state of emergency in Marion County due to COVID-19 pandemic.
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to vote on that or not. Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion to add that item? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Mr. Chair, I move to add an item to the action agenda under Board of Commissioners. Consider approval of an order recognizing and honoring Juneteenth in Marion County.
I'll second that motion.
And I will approve that motion too. So any further discussion to put that on the agenda? Hearing done. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. So we'll go back to public comment and we have David Bean signed up today. Welcome, David. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to see all the families come to the county fair in Marion County and the families, and have more volunteers at the county fair because we don't have many much people out there helping. So I urge everybody in Marion County, help out and the families too. So I urge everybody come and have a good time and it's $5 if they get in. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Appreciate it. I see Jill nodding her head, you know, our fair coordinator. Yeah.
And I'd like to see that done for next year too. More.
All the volunteers we can get. Thank you.
Yeah, for Marion County. Thank you.
Okay. And speaking of the fair that David just talked about, Tamara, we're going to have a little fair presentation today. Didn't we do this last week with some bunnies in the room?
Some bunnies, yes. Good morning, Tamara Getch, Director of Community Services. And I'm joined here today with...
Jill Ingles, the event coordinator for the Marion County Fair.
So this morning, I just wanted to highlight again that we are having an in-person fair this year. And it is July 9th through 11th, Friday through Sunday. The hours are 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM Friday and Saturday and 10:00 to 6:00 on Sunday. And this morning, before we get into any details and additional, we want to just give you a little flavor of what might be happening at the fair this year. With us this morning, we have one of our walk-around acts by the name of Washboard Willie. And so he's going to give our audience, both in person and through the television, an opportunity to hear what he has going on for us at the fair. So this is ticket-worthy. So make sure you get your tickets at the county fair so that we can enjoy not only Washboard Willie, but other acts that will be at the fair.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. I am back. And it's my pleasure to be here at the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's 26 years ago I started my career as Washboard Willie in Oregon on the ferry fairgrounds. People ask me all the time, "Washboard Willie, make a living." To win this. Now it's a fair living. I've been doing a buzzing disguise. This Washboard Willie sounds a little silly, but you must feel honest. I've done everything I thought I had to do. Made a little money, decided to help the people. Now down to work, make a living. I'm a tight-tied rhythm, ridden by the river gypsy in my soul. Travel around from town to town, playing my romance show. I'm sharing all the rhythm with the children of a heart. Where did it begin? Where I had to start. You know, I didn't have faith. I paid my stake since I've been through the door. I've raised some and I've eaten from. After high school, I left home. Travel around, turn my sorrow into sound. I'm playing and I'm passing all the rhythm around. I'm a tight-tied rhythm, ridden by the river gypsy in my soul. I travel around from town to town, playing my romance show. I'm sharing all the rhythm with the children of a heart. Where did it begin? Where I had to start. You know, I played by the bars with boys and guitars and females once in a while. I get my kids to my little crib when they're rich with my star. And then I settled down and I thought I had it made with a motorcycle accident. Still not paid. Now I'm a tight-tied rhythm, ridden by the river gypsy in my soul. I travel around from town to town, playing my romance show. I'm sharing all the rhythm with the children of a heart. Where did it begin? Where I had to start. That's right. I'm a tight-tied rhythm, ridden by the river gypsy in my soul. I travel around the fair and fair, playing my romance show. I'm sharing all the Marion County fun with the children of a heart. Where did it begin? Where I had to start. That's right. Where did it begin? Where I had to start. It's a fair living. So come on down to Marion County Fair.
Well, thank you. Got me going this morning. You'd like a little rhythm to start the morning off, right? Yeah, we'll see at the fair. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Washboard Willie. And you can see more of him at the Marion County Fair on all days. He'll be our walk-around. So and we also want to talk about a couple more things that are going on. And while we talk about that, I'm going to ask our 4-H youth to join us at the center table while we continue to talk a little bit about what else is happening.
So I just want to touch on Family Day because we do have obviously a big focus on the youth. Sunday is Family Day. And we have sort of a new lineup, but Angelo Ocasio is joining us first thing to kick off the day on Sunday. He is doing a children's comedy show on the main stage, followed by the stage takeover from Phoenix Duo. And they're bringing in lots of students, music students from around Marion County to entertain us for the entire day. We have rumors that unless there's somebody they're rescuing on another planet or something, the superheroes will be with us, Star Wars characters, lots of royalty and strolling princesses and Disney characters. So Sunday Family Day is going to be just great for the family to come out. 10 to 6, you'll see animals, you'll see lots of different entertainment. And of course, there's dog activities going on the entire run of the fair. So all of this can be seen on the website, marioncountyfair.net. We also want to encourage you to get tickets online in advance. They're discounted. And we have a couple more days before they go up to regular price. So get those in advance. But full run of fair, lots of great local and regional entertainment and fun things to do.
And a large part of our fair is having youth show what they have been doing over the last year. And we've brought here today...
I am Mason.
And Mason shows rabbits at the fair. So Mason, would you tell us a little bit about what you're doing and how you got involved with 4-H?
So what I'm doing is the showing rabbits and they are a little bit sensitive to the heat. So the past weekend has been kind of hard for them, but I managed to get through it. Yeah.
What kind of rabbits are these?
These are, this one, the brown one is a New Zealand and then the other one is a Californian.
And... What kind of program do you participate in?
4-H.
What do you do with 4-H?
I show the rabbits at the fair. Show the rabbits at the fair.
Are these show rabbits solely or do you do something with these particular rabbits?
They're show rabbits and they're also meat rabbits. So you can either sell them alive or you can get them butchered and eat them.
And what do you do with that program?
Sometimes I sell them butchered and sometimes I sell them alive.
I've never tasted rabbit before. How does it taste?
I hear it tastes like chicken. I never eat.
That's fair. So Mason is just one of many, many young people who will be joining us at the fair. This year, our youth show program will begin on Monday, right?
Actually, the dogs show on Saturday.
Okay.
This Saturday.
Okay. So dogs are showing Saturday and then because of the pandemic and unsure of safe regulations around COVID, we had to plan so that we could keep kids safe and families there. And so we're actually doing shows all the way leading up to the fair, starting Saturday, and in different heats, if you will, across each day. And then when are you showing, Mason?
I am showing on Friday.
At what time do you know?
I do not know.
So Friday will be rabbits and there are lots of others. We will make sure that we have that information available to interested parties. The auction will continue to happen as regularly scheduled on Saturday. And the only animals that will be spending the evening with us will be our pigs, which will stay over on Saturday night.
Friday night.
Friday night. That's right. Friday night into Saturday. So Mason is a fine example of what the 4-H program and FFA program provide to our young people and prepares him for real-world experiences in managing projects as well as finding new things to do and being really responsible young people. So thank you, Mason. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mason, thank you. You know, I don't think it was just the rabbits that had a hard time this last weekend getting through. I think we all did.
Yeah.
Yeah. Great. I would imagine they start to lose their coat pretty quick if it's too warm, huh?
Well, they sure are cute.
Yep.
Thank you.
So thank you so much for allowing us to be here.
No, I don't want to hold them. It's so funny.
It's very cute. See you Friday.
I like how you kind of crow them by their face. Like, no, it's like holding a toddler back.
Thank you, Jill. Thanks, Tamara. Thank you, Mason.
Okay, last one. One jumped off the table.
Okay, we go from rabbits to COVID-19. Katrina is here, which we hope is probably her last... Well, no, never mind. I'm not going to jinx it.
Let's not jinx it.
It's not jinx it.
You keep coming.
Welcome, Katrina.
Thank you. Katrina Rothenberger, I'm the Public Health Division Director with Marion County Health and Human Services. And today I'll start with the data that I typically present and then talk a little bit about what we've done and major milestones over the course of the past year. So as of today, there were 23,603 total COVID-19 cases in Marion County. 320 people have died. And the percent positivity rate for the duration of the pandemic was 8.3%. For the two-week period, June 13th through June 26th, there were 316 cases with a case rate of 90.9 per 100,000. And the seven-day average case count right now is 19 cases per day. These rates continue to decrease in Marion County and the state as a whole. So they've decreased just under 8% from the previous two-week period, June 6th through June 19th. And the majority of cases are still coming from the central Salem, northeast Salem, Brooks, south Salem, and Kaiser zip codes. As of yesterday, we have vaccinated 61.37% of all Marion County residents with at least one dose of the vaccine. And we have just under 10,000 more folks to go to hit that 65% benchmark. In the state, 69.4% of folks are vaccinated with at least one dose. And we just need 19,083 more people to reach the 70% benchmark. Okay. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about today, the restrictions are lifted. It's a day we've all been looking forward to for so long. And after a year of restrictions, mask-wearing, and adapting to all of these challenges, I just wanted to highlight a few major milestones and think about, reflect on how far we've come since March of 2020. So we were one of the first... We set up our Department Operations Center on March 2nd. And this was prior to our first case of COVID-19 in Marion County. We actually did a soft activation. We were kind of like, should we? Should we not? Let's get organized and think about this in mid-February. And then we decided, okay, it's time on March 2nd. We started with a pretty small staff in our operations center and grew to over 100 people supporting the COVID response. In the beginning, personal protective equipment was really difficult to find. And we had our community come together with donations from other sectors of the healthcare setting and businesses and... And community members made homemade masks for us. So it was really a community effort from the very beginning. There was a lack of testing. And then we worked with our partners to set up testing throughout the county. University of Oregon, who's still doing testing in various locations in Marion County through the end of August. Woodburn Ambulance and Falc. We were the first county to release data at the zip code level to direct resources to the hardest-hit communities in Marion County. And we've been using those data to make informed decisions throughout. The vaccine rollout was also pretty significant. And one of the most memorable moments when we finally got, when I first got my first shot was great. And just getting our whole community organized. It was really wonderful to see that not only did we immunize a lot of people in Marion County, but also in the state of Oregon. Salem Health, San Yam Hospital, Interface Network, the fairgrounds, Legacy, Woodburn Ambulance, Falc, Mount Angel Fire Department actually did a lot of vaccines for us as well. All these folks just did an incredible job and continue to do so to get vaccine out into our community. Our staff at the Health Department, you've heard me mention many times that they've been working long hours, holidays, and weekends. It's nice that we're coming to an end. We stopped working Sundays and holidays recently, which was really nice. That just happened in June. And we look forward to a Monday-through-Friday work week here in mid-July. We're hoping so. We're also just so thankful for all of our community partners who've stepped up. And without their partnership, we could not have met the needs of our community alone. These relationships have really been strengthened. And I know that we're committed to working together to address needs in our community beyond the COVID-19 pandemic. I know it's been a difficult year for all of us. Our community has been hit hard with the various restrictions and closures. And life as we know it completely changed overnight. And Marion County has proven over and over again how resilient we are through all the disasters that we've endured over the past year and a half. I want to make sure that people know that we are still committed to closing the vaccine inequities, that we're still going to be doing case investigation and contact tracing, following up on outbreaks. It's just going to be embedded into our normal public health response. So COVID will look like other reportable diseases from the local public health perspective. So we're still here. We're still doing what we can to make sure that folks are protected from COVID-19. We're just happy that we can have these restrictions lifted and we can return to a new normal. And then I just want to mention that variants are circulating. And the best way to combat the variants is to get vaccinated. Vaccine is still available. We're still giving a couple thousand doses of vaccine every week. And reach out to your medical provider if you have questions, if you just, if you feel like it's something that you might want to consider, please reach out and talk with your healthcare provider. And you can find an appointment online at 211 or our website at covid-19.mchealthy.net to find a vaccination clinic. So that's all I wanted to share for today. Thank you.
I see, Commissioner, that you put your mask back on.
Uh-huh. I wanted to wear it for one last time, actually.
You were just nostalgic over there, huh?
It's amazing how every time I put on a different suit, I find one. And I was just sitting here going, hey, I got one. This is an old one. But today we get to take these off officially, right? Is that, is that what we're going to do here?
You are, because I wasn't wearing one. I already cleaned out my car. They're gone.
The CDC told me I didn't have to wear one. I stopped wearing one.
I think I was the first commissioner to start wearing one up here. And I'll be the last one.
I helped them remove the signs in the coffee shop today.
And I will request unanimous consent to move action item under the Board of Commissioners that we just added, action item number one, to our, move it up to right now so that we can take action on this emergency. No objection?
No objection.
Hearing done. All right. We've moved it to now. And so we will take action on approval of an order ending the declared state of emergency in Marion County due to COVID-19 pandemic. You don't need to say anything.
Me do it?
We have it in front of us. You want to read it? You want to...
I feel like she should read it.
Why don't we make a motion and then we'll read it?
All right. Why don't you go ahead and make the motion, Commissioner?
All right. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an order ending the declared state of emergency in Marion County due to the COVID-19 pandemic.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second.
Why don't you read that?
You want to, you want to read that, Katrina? You want us to read it?
She doesn't have it.
Oh, she doesn't?
I think you ought to do it, Mr. Chair.
We can give it to her, though. I think she should read it.
Yeah, I think, I think you should, you deserve to read this one. You can read it from wherever you want.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Do it with gusto.
All right. This matter came before the Board of Commissioners on June 30th, 2021. And whereas on March 16th, 2020, this board declared a state of emergency created by the COVID-19 pandemic, which was threatening life and property. And whereas in recent months, the rate of COVID, rate of positive COVID-19 cases and hospitalizations significantly declined in Marion County. And whereas, beginning in January of 2021, the county has overseen vaccine administration and the majority of our citizens are now vaccinated against COVID-19. And whereas Governor Brown will lift all state COVID-19 restrictions on June 30th, 2021. Now, therefore, it is ordered that the board formally declares that the state of emergency due to COVID-19 for Marion County is over. And it is further ordered that all county policies, temporary rules, and emergency powers and operations delegated to departments related to COVID-19 emergency are hereby rescinded effective June 30th, 2021.
Hooray!
Any further discussion?
May I make one clarifying comment regarding the temporary rules? They are rescinded today. However, because employees will all be brought back on the 19th, the board entered this order or directed the drafting of this order with the understanding that departments would still work through July 19th, bringing people back to full-time work.
Looking over at our chief administrative officer.
That's right.
And that's correct? All right. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So thanks, Katrina. I just, I don't want to, you know, there's loss of life here, there's loss of jobs, business. There was, there's been so much lost during this time. And it's magnified by what we all went through. But there's some good things that came out of it. If you think about the productivity we have now with Zoom meetings, handwashing of the public, just being more conscientious of personal hygiene and protecting yourself and others around you. So there are some good things that came out of it and we need to hopefully keep those things. And I appreciate, Katrina, you mentioned the variants. We do need to continue to see if we can get more vaccines in arms. So thank you for your work there. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Comments?
Yeah, so this order is not listed on our website yet, I assume because we're passing it this morning. So where can it be found by the public when it is ready?
It'll be on the board's page.
It'll be on the board's website?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm, people are already asking me.
Yeah. All right. So we will move on to the consent calendar. And since Commissioner Willis, you made that last motion. Commissioner Bethel, you want to do the consent?
Sure. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent calendar. Item one under Finance, approve a quitclaim deed for the sale of property ID number R39658 from Marion County, grantor of the family burial ground cemetery to grantees Colleen Heater and Susan Turner. Item two, under Human Cert Resources, approve a recommendation to update classification specifications and adjust upward the pay grades for classification number 401, maintenance worker; number 402, medium equipment operator; number 447, ferry operator; number 446, ferry operator relief; number 404, heavy equipment operator; number 414, crew leader; number 412, road operations supervisor; number 346, environmental services operations supervisor; number 314, engineering division manager; number 354, environmental services division manager; number 375, building and planning division manager; number 442, public works operation division manager; and number 665, administration division manager. Item three, under Public Works, receive notice of hearings, officers' decision denying conditional use, CU, case number 20-044, Jeff and Heidi Jones on property owned by Ag Retainment Incorporated. Schedule final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance for July 7th, 2021, granting zone change, ZC, case number 21-002J, Conser and Sons LLC. And schedule final consideration to adopt an administrative ordinance for July 7th, 2021, granting zone change, ZC, case number 21-003/J, Conser and Sons LLC. And finally, under Sheriff's Office, approve a resolution extending the suspension of the Marion County Sheriff's Office Jail Capacity Management Plan through September 30th, 2021, due to COVID-19 emergency. Authorizing the Marion County Sheriff to restrict lodging of arrestsees and to allow release of inmates is appropriate to maintain health and safety.
I'll second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to state on the last item under the Sheriff's Office that although we have approved the limited capacity for the jail, that doesn't mean that the Sheriff's Office isn't going to move forward with increasing capacity over the next few months. And it also doesn't really change anything from pre-COVID. We only had 400 and so beds before, and there was always a release process in place before COVID for various reasons. And for folks that are concerned about what they call the catch-and-release system in Marion County, I'd encourage them to reach out to the Sheriff's Office and talk to them so they can be fully informed and not just assume that we're not detaining people who really need to be detained.
Well, I think the, the reality is, it's a big ship that the sheriff's steering over there. Running a jail is very complicated. And this will give them time to get back to normal over there. They can't just do it on time.
Yeah, and the courts haven't caught up yet. So we have a lot of people in our jail right now that are just waiting for their trials and sentencing, and that causes issues for us as far as capacity. So hurry up, court system.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We will move to, under Board of Commissioners, item number two, consider approval of an order recognizing and honoring Juneteenth in Marion County. Jane, are you going to do this one?
I, I can.
It has your name by it.
Well, it really should have the Board of Commissioners Office named by it because this is something that the board directed me to draft because you recognize the importance of Juneteenth. And you wanted to commemorate that day and you wanted to do it in a way also recognizing the hard work of your employees. And so based on your direction, this order again recognizes Juneteenth, Juneteenth as an important day in America. And in honor of that day, the board has decided to move forward and in this next pay period, remember all full-time employees with an additional eight hours of straight pay. And then also permanent full-time, I mean, permanent regular part-time employees with the same additional pay prorated on their full-time status.
So why don't we do the same thing as we did with the other one? Why don't we take a motion and get a second and then one of us can beat it?
I'd be happy to read it.
Yeah.
No, I think we should probably make some comments too, because we should explain this a little bit.
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move to approve an order recognizing and honoring Juneteenth in Marion County.
And I second the motion.
Yeah, motion and second. I'm sure you want to read the, the order?
Yes. In the matter of recognizing and honoring Juneteenth, this matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regularly scheduled public meeting Wednesday, June 30th, 2021, to recognize the importance of Juneteenth, which was made a federal holiday by President Biden on June 17th, 2021. Whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, declaring enslaved people in Confederate territory free. And whereas, news of the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation did not reach enslaved persons in Texas until June 19th, 1865. And whereas, June 19th, which became known as Juneteenth, is a celebration of the freedom of formerly enslaved African-Americans. And whereas, Marion County employees work every day to serve all county residents with excellence and integrity. And whereas, the Marion County Board of Commissioners recognize and honor the significance of Juneteenth. Now therefore, it is hereby ordered that in recognition of Juneteenth, all regular full-time employees will receive an additional eight hours of straight pay for the, for the pay period ending June 26th, 2021. And all regular part-time employees will receive the same additional pay prorated based upon their FTE for the pay period ending June 26th, 2021, dated at Salem, Oregon, June 30th, 2021.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Well, I, I just, this is, this is important, I think. This is a celebration of the end of slavery in the United States. President Biden declared this a national holiday the day before the actual date, right? And so we didn't have the time to, and we weren't, you know, we didn't, we didn't have the ability to give everybody the day off the next day. The timeline was too short. But this is something that I think in the midst of the last year we've had, everybody can come together and celebrate this. This is a momentous moment for our nation. And I'm just really excited. I didn't want this to pass by. And we had this discussion about whether we were going to, well, just wait till next year. And we said, no, this is important enough that, that we need to recognize it this year, even if we couldn't organize fast enough to give employees the day off. So that's, that's what this is and that's why we're doing it.
I agree. I appreciate the explanation. And I appreciate Jan and, and our legal team putting this together in such an expedited way.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's amazing to me that, you know, Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, January 1 of, what, 1863? It took two and a half years later to reach the state of Texas. Yeah, you imagine how fast that would happen today? Right? I mean, instantaneous information. So, yeah, this is an important day in, in the history of our country and in the history of humanity as well. So it's great to be able to vote on this and allow our people to share in it too. So, any further discussion?
I'd just like to send people to the Salem Kaiser NAACP website if they'd like to learn more about it and participate in activities. Every year on Juneteenth, on June 19th, they host an activity, the Salem Riverfront Park. And it's, it's a great time. I went a couple years ago and I would encourage folks to go and take your kids and learn about history that you don't really learn about in depth in our schools anymore, because it's really important.
Great. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. That is done. Thank you again to staff, Jane and Jan, for making this thing happen and getting it done quickly. All right. So we are moving on to, yeah, I guess we're going to go.
Lisa's like hiding over there.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna go to Contract Review Board, right? We will, now.
No. Nope, they're saying no. We're doing item number three?
It's Board Commissioners' Approval of Yardi.
Oh, okay. Got it. Yeah. Top of the page.
She's like, no.
Right. We'll go to item number three, Consider Approval of the Rent Relief Agreement with Yardi Systems, Inc. in the amount of $1 million. Provide online application and case management services for the county's Emergency Rental Assistance Program through December 31st, 2025. Lisa and Camber, I know you've tried to get up here like three or four times. I just keep making it hard. So, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. I'm Lisa Trauernecht, Senior Policy Analyst in the Board of Commissioners Office.
And I'm Camber Schley, Contracts and Care Manager of the Finance Department.
And we were here a couple weeks ago to get approval to move forward with an agreement with Yardi Systems for rent relief program for rent, emergency rental assistance money that the county received from the US Treasury. We've received two different pots of money, each $10.4 million, a little over $10.4 million. And Yardi Systems has a program that they will be a vendor that will help us get this money out to the community. So we are ready to get rolling on that. There's been a lot of rental assistance money going around the state. And we have some here in Marion County that Community Action Agency has been managing. And these are different funds than that. But also, all of this money is going to get out to the community to help people that are, have been suffering in the last year and a half on, to be able to pay their rent. This money will cover back rent. So rental arrears, utility arrears, as well as forward rent. I want to encourage people, today's June 30th and the eviction moratorium ended. However, the legislature did extend a little bit. They gave a little leeway in Senate Bill 278, I think it was, where they, yeah, Senate Bill 278, that people can't be evicted for not paying July and August rent. But I would encourage people to please pay their July and August rent, because even if they haven't paid back rent, as our system gets set up, we'll be able to help them with the back rent. But the eviction, the seriousness of evictions goes into effect now, July 1st. The Senate Bill 278 states that people, as long as they've applied for rental assistance, they can not get evicted. They have to prove that with their, with, through their landlord that they've applied for rental assistance. But I just want to make sure that people know that the seriousness of paying rent forward, starting in July, and then as our system gets set up, I've been reaching out to nonprofits and our local community partners to let people know that it's coming online. We're anticipating by the end of July, mid, mid to late July. And then we can get people getting into the system for rental arrears and utility arrears.
Camber, anything to add?
Yeah. So we will be putting, we'll be working with the contractor to put the link on our website so that the citizens of Marion County can go to the website, click on the link, begin their application process. And as those applications start coming in, the contractor and their call centers and case managers will be reaching out to the constituents to get them to complete their applications, to talk through the process with them. And once they get all of their documentation within the system, their application is complete, it will come to Marion County for final review. And Marion County will then basically sign off on accepting the application as provided and give the final say in submitting those payments out to the landlords and to the constituents for the assistance. And we'll be working with, as Lisa mentioned, we'll be working with Jolene Kelly in the Board's Office and with our partners to get the word out, to have everybody come to our website to get those applications turned in.
Okay. Good. Questions?
I just want to say thank you. I know this was a lot of work to get to this point. And I think it's the right solution for our community. So thank you for your work on this.
Again, quickly getting it done. Right? This money was stolen our laps, what, a month ago, a month and a half ago?
I just want to clarify that this isn't just COVID relief, right? We have funds to be able to help people who were hindered by the wildfires as well? Is that right or no?
Well, so the second wildfire families are one of our priorities. So I guess I should have said that. Marion County does have priorities. The Treasury has priorities on the money. And so the money assists people that are at 80% of the area median income, 80% or below, with a priority of people at 50% of area median income. And then the county has put additional priorities on that money. And so fire, people affected by fire, wildfires are their seniors' families. So a family would be, a senior is somebody over 58, 58 or older. Families would be at least one adult and one child living in a, in a unit. And anybody referred by Marion County programs that fit the income qualifications. So we have several programs in our, in our county through health, through the Sheriff's Office, through juvenile, our juvenile department. So any of those programs that would refer our DA's office, anybody that would refer somebody to this, this program, they get a priority also. So to answer your question, Commissioner, are the second, the first round of funding was very specific to COVID-related economic situations. And the second round is anybody that was affected during the time of the pandemic. So yes. And it doesn't have to be specific to you have a documented COVID-related job loss.
Are you going to develop like an FAQ and a priority list to share? Aside from connecting with your nonprofits, are we going to be working on a communication plan to really get that information out to folks? $21 million is, is a lot of money and I'd like to get it out the door as soon as possible.
Yeah. That's what we'll be working on in the next couple of weeks as we get the program up and running. As we get the, we have, it takes a couple of weeks for the software vendor to get, to do their part and then for our staff to get trained on it. And so once we, in that timeframe, we'll also be working on the FAQs and our marketing plan to get it out.
That's great.
Okay.
Very good. Is it my motion? Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the rent relief agreement with Yardi Systems Incorporated, the amount of $1 million to provide online application and case management services for the county's Emergency Rental Assistance Program through December 31st, 2025.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to continue here with item number four, Approval of the Grant Agreement with the United States Department of Treasury in the amount of $67,559,569 for the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds through December 31st.
You got it. You got it all. Good job.
Twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, I don't think you need me to say anything.
Well, go ahead.
I'm Jeff White, Chief Financial Officer for Marion County. As everyone is aware, this is the funding referred to as ARPA for shortened version. So we don't have to go through that process, Commissioner, that you just went through. We have received the first half of that funding. The second half will be distributed next year. There are specific requirements on how that funding is spent. There's some requirements that the board will need to lay out a plan. I understand you'll be working on that. Where that funding will go, there there's probably more requests and desire for that money than what we actually have. It sounds like a lot. It'll be a once in a generational opportunity to, to make some things happen in Marion County that will, will benefit the citizens of Marion County. We are going through what those rules look like. I, I think we just learned this week there's an August 31 reporting period to submit a draft plan of what, what Marion County might want to do with those funds. What's really a bit of a challenge is, is the rules are only temporary rules for the moment. The, the federal government has indicated they'll issue final rules sometime in the next period of time. But we're to follow the temporary ones for now, assuming that those will likely be the rules in place when it's finalized. But there'll be some adjusting as we go along. So we would recommend this, this approval that received of these funds.
Thanks, Jeff. Comments?
You just have to say yes. That's all we have to do.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the grant agreement with the United States Department of Treasury in the amount of $67,559,569 for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds through December 31st, 2026.
And I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say on the record, and I feel like we've talked about this before, but we're meeting over a series of meetings with all of our cities across the county to determine what their priorities are, determining what they're doing with the ARPA dollars that they're receiving or applying for. So that way we have a good overlook of, of county needs before we go and make final decisions. It doesn't, it's not, obviously it falls to us to make those decisions, but we want to do it collaboratively with our cities to make sure those dollars go as fast and make as big an impact as they can.
Right. And I think, Jeff, you mentioned it's a once in a lifetime generational opportunity for us. And that's what we'll be looking at is, how do we do this and make an impact with these one time for the future of our, our children and grandchildren and our citizens? So, and I've been saying this for a long time, Christmas in July, well, actually it's Christmas in June today. But we, we have been getting notice on some dollars that we know are coming our way now. So we're, we're able to start to figure out where, what all we have. We're unwrapping the presents. So this is another one that is a gift to the citizens. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Under Finance, I think you're going to stay up there. Consider Approval of a Purchase Order with Account Temps Salaryed Professional Service, a Division of Robert Half International, Inc. in the amount of $200,000 to assist the Marion County Finance Department and Marion County Health Department Services with federal revenue tracking and reconciliation. So this goes right along with what we just did.
Yes, it does. Thank you, Commissioner. With, with the federal dollars we're getting through ARPA, some of the state legislative dollars we're getting, they're, all the accountants fall in line. There's a lot we're going to have to track and monitor to make sure that we are accounting for those funds appropriately. We sought to find some additional help for both the workload and expertise. And we're fortunate to find a contract person through Account Temps. They're hard to find right now. The whole world is looking for federally experienced qualified accounting people. Again, fortunately, there's a cooperative agreement to allow us to make this, to put this purchase order in place. We have worked out an arrangement where the person that we've contracted for is an actual employee of Account Temps, not one of their temporary people, which assures us that she will likely be with us long-term. Folks who are usually temporary employees with these contracting agencies are seeking employment, so you can have them for a week or two months and then they're gone. This is a regular employee of Account Temps. She's done some fantastic work for us already. I have arranged with Account Temps that we can have her as long as we want. The contract can be terminated upon notice. Also, if we find we don't have the need, but up to, we're doing a purchase order request for up to two years, anticipating a, a lot of need until we can sort out exactly what that need is. At least we have somebody retained, if you will. She's been helping the Health Department right now work on their schedule of federal awards. That's been very helpful. So we've So we've partnered with Health on that, and we'll keep using her wherever we need as we figure out particularly the rules for ARPA. So we would recommend the approval of this two-hundred thousand dollar purchase order.
You okay with the motion?
Are you bet.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the purchase order with Account Temps, Salaryed Professional Service, Division of Robert Half International, Incorporated, in the amount of two-hundred thousand dollars to assist the Marion County Finance Department and the Marion County Health and Human Services Department with federal revenue tracking and reconciliation through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three.
I second the motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Under Information Technology, consider approval of a purchase order agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents for the annual renewal of Groupwise and Zenworks licenses and maintenance through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. Gary, welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Gary Christopherson, IT Interim Director.
I'm Kevin Weeks, the IT Operations Manager.
So, before you today, we have a proposal to continue paying the annual cost of providing Groupwise and Zenworks software to the county. As you know, email and calendaring are a mission-critical means of communicating across the county. Groupwise gives employees email, calendaring, task management. It also includes instant messaging and contact management. The Zenworks piece is used by IT to deploy applications and to keep our hardware up to date, and it allows us to control that hardware. Paying for the maintenance and support provides a couple of things to the county. It provides issue resolution. If we have any issues with those products, we have somebody to call and to get support. It also allows us, as new features and functionality become available, to have access to them and to deploy them. And it also just provides a general product support. Quite simply, this is the annual cost for email and calendaring across the county, and Kevin can talk to you about those costs.
Welcome, Kevin.
Thank you. The, for this category of software, usually, an annual increase runs between five and seven percent. We average that six percent is what we estimate. And in this case, the one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand dollars is five-point-seven percent above last year's. So it's right in line with annual cost increases.
Okay.
Questions? All right, I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase order agreement with SHI International Corporation in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents for the annual renewal of Groupwise and Zenworks licenses and maintenance through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two.
I second the motion.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. And my group, it's working. It went off for a little while. Now that we approved the contract, it's back. All right. Okay, item number seven is under Public Works. Consider approval of incoming funds in an intergovernmental agreement with the East Salem Service District, New Marion, ESSD, in the amount of four million, one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-eleven dollars to provide stormwater services through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. Dennis, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, I'm Dennis Mansfield. I'm the Administration Division Manager for Public Works Department. Thank you for your time this morning. So just a little bit about stormwater management in the East Salem Service District. The stormwater management team provides several stormwater-related services to the East Salem Service District, further identified as ESSD. The types and frequency of services require, are required by the Federal Environmental Protection Agency and the State Department of Environmental Quality through our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit, often referred to as the NPDES Permit. There are three primary focuses of stormwater management and the services provided within ESSD. The first primary focus is maintenance of the stormwater system. The storm, stormwater management team is responsible for the collection and conveyance of stormwater to a set location, often a body of water such as a creek or a river. And the first thing we want to do is try to keep that debris out of the system, and we do that through street sweeping services. So leaves, trash, try to get all that picked up so we don't get it into our pipes. We sweep approximately two thousand miles a year in the East Salem Service District. Additionally, we do maintenance on the collection of stormwater through our catch basins. We have twenty-two-hundred in the system, and last year, we cleaned twelve-hundred of them. So about a hundred a month we're cleaning. Also responsible for the conveyance, the pipes and the ditches. We clear, clear the debris to mitigate flooding and mow approximately twelve miles of ditches each year. Our second primary focus is infrastructure improvements and flood mitigation planning. So some of the pipe infrastructure is old, like fifty-plus years old. And so we TV the pipes. We actually send a camera on wheels through the system to gain better knowledge of the state of the infrastructure. We have eighty-two miles of pipe that we're looking at. So, this allows us to be more proactive in our approach to where we want to spend our limited resources. We're also planning, coordinating, and implementing infrastructure improvements. We have begun a long-term planning with the City of Salem, which will help mitigate flooding for the future with an anticipated project for our large detention basin location to be determined and establishing best practices. Third primary focus is outreach and education. Educating the community on the importance of keeping our stormwater clean is critical. We want to help them understand why we don't want to dump chemicals, oil, and trash down our stormwater drains as these things go directly into our streams. We did this, we do this through various community engagements, working with schools in the community, and providing reminders near stormwater drains, like a plaque that reads, "Please don't dump, I'm downstream," with a picture of a fish. The cleaner the water, the better for all of us and those that inhabit these waterways. So how does this all get funded? This gets funded through an annual stormwater assessment fee to property owners in the East Salem Service District, the details of which are in the contract as Exhibit A. As a summary, for all single-family residential customers, they are assessed fifty-four dollars and sixty cents per year on their property taxes. Apartment complexes are assessed fifty-four dollars and sixty cents per year per dwelling unit. And commercial and industrial customers are assessed equivalent dwelling unit, an EDU charge of fifty-four dollars and sixty cents per year per three thousand square feet of impervious surface. So as an example, if a commercial or industrial customer has six thousand square feet of impervious surface, they are charged two EDUs for a total of a hundred and nine dollars and twenty cents per year. This is a five-year contract with an option to extend another five years and anticipate spending about four-point-one-six million in the first term of the contract. It is staff's recommendation that the Commissioners approve this contract. Opened any questions in my half?
No questions.
Well, this is, again, one of those services that our people in New Marion pay for directly, and they get the direct service. So, appreciate all your work and, and staff's work on this, Dennis. I know we had a little presentation last week, so.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the incoming funds intergovernmental agreement with the East Salem Service District in the amount of four million, one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-eleven dollars to provide stormwater services through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six.
I second the motion.
All right, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Great. So are you going to stay up here for this next one, or is we going to switch?
The two Bryans are coming.
All right.
Oh, the Bryans.
All right. So we got the Brian and the Brian Show. Consider approval of a service agreement with Covanta Marion, Inc., for the supply and processing of solid waste.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Brian Nicholas, Marion County Public Works Director.
Brian May, Environmental Services Division Manager.
All right, so after more than two years of work, Brian and I are here to present a draft proposed operating agreement for the Covanta Marion Energy From Waste Facility in Brooks. So I will be talking about the contract structure and how the new proposed structure is different from the old operating structure, and then, and some of the benefits for Marion County and the public. Brian's going to be talking about the essential services that that facility provides that'll be perpetuated through the new proposed operating agreement, as well as some of the specific contract terms. So historically, Covanta Marion has operated under a cost-sharing agreement with the county, which means that while Marion County shared, you know, received the majority of the revenue generated from electricity sales, the county also participated in paying for a lot of the operating expenses for the facility. So, really, what that does is expose, has exposed the county some, to some operational, operational cost risks. So, for example, every year, Marion County has paid the property taxes for that facility. The county's paid the natural gas bill. The county has paid annual compliance testing and permit fees for the facility. We paid the liability insurance fees, and have paid capital facility improvement costs resulting from changes in regulations. So, if a change in regulation resulted in the need for new testing protocols or new facilities to maintain clean air standards, the county paid the lion's share for those. So, there was a, really, the county really has participated deeply in the financial life of that facility. Under the new agreement, what we, what we're presenting to you is, is a merchant agreement. So, rather than participating in the financial activity of the facility, really, we're transitioning to a new program where the county simply pays for a service. This facility is owned and operated by Covanta, and under a, you know, merchant agreement, you want to assign cost risks to those parties in the agreement that are best able to manage those risks. So, Covanta is the operator, they will be, you know, moving forward under the proposed agreement, they would be managing those cost risks. So, what this does is it shifts operational cost risk to Covanta, and it eliminates that long list of costs that Marion County has participated in the past. So the, the proposed agreement has a three-year base term with two five-year extensions. The new proposed operating agreement places any costs associated with change in law, or most prospective costs associated with change in law, to, assigns that to be the responsibility of Covanta to, to handle. It maintains Marion County ownership of renewable energy credits that the facility has generated in the past. It also, it also grants fifty percent ownership of any new renewable energy credits that the facility would generate in the future. For the first time, we have an operating agreement that has performance guarantees for Covanta Marion. So, the agreement obligates Covanta to generate at least one-hundred-and-twenty-five, or process at least one-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand tons of municipal solid waste on behalf of the county. Failure to meet that, that benchmark results in a penalty that Covanta has to pay the county for. And then, one of the significant things, one of those hidden costs that isn't readily apparent is, when you have a cost-sharing agreement where you're participating in most aspects of operating the facility, the monthly invoice that we get is easily sixty pages, the backup is easily three hundred pages or more, and that entire process becomes streamlined into, you know, what we're expecting to be a pretty straightforward invoice for services. Right. How many tons of material are they processed, and what's the, what's the fee for processing those tons? It gives you a little snapshot of how the, the merchant agreement is structured, but Brian will take it with, from there with some additional detail.
Good morning. I think the most important part is, what Brian discussed is the complete kind of restructuring of the contract, and for me, the most important part is, you're not going to see a difference at the curve. What people see today as far as services, and I think of the essential services, what this system provides as a solid waste system, and what Covanta offering. One of those things that's very key to us is, is how do we dispose of medical waste collected within the county? So we'll continue to be able to provide that service for those entities that are collected within the county at the discounted rate that we've offered them, which is almost ten times less than what the, the going rate is today. In addition to that, our law enforcement and entities, not only within the state, or not within the county, but also within the state, to use, utilize this facility to dispose of evidence that they've collected, which is kind of a critical piece of what Covanta provides for us. In addition to that, confidential records destruction. The other part of that is our residential stream of, of waste that's collected, we always want to follow the waste hierarchy and recover as much material as possible. And that residential stream is kind of very difficult at this time with the technology that's out there. By directing this material to Covanta and being able to put at least one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand tons a year into there, we will get power generation and also get metal recovery. Last year alone, pardon me, we received, recovered over seventy-five-hundred tons of metal out of that waste stream. So it's pretty significant. Otherwise, that would have been destined for a landfill near us and just entombed kind of forever and ever. Some key features, again, I mentioned the, the twenty-five-thousand tons, that's an at-least number. Currently, Marion County, we dispose of about one-hundred-and-forty-five to one-hundred-and-sixty-thousand tons at Covanta. The biggest piece in this contract is it's going to allow us the flexibility, as I mentioned, kind of new technologies that are coming out there, new ways of dealing with waste streams. We're kind of on that edge of what's coming out. There's a new facility that we've talked about that's out on the coast that we're hoping to get some trial loads in there and see what it does. This contract will allow us that flexibility to move material within our system to get that higher best use and, and increase our recovery numbers. Another key component is the medical waste volumes, the capacity of what was able to go into Covanta. We reduce that from twenty-five-thousand tons down to eighteen-thousand tons. The other, another piece is, Marion County's always been responsible for the transportation and disposal of the ash that's generated from Covanta. As of your approval of this contract, that burden will fall onto Covanta, and Marion County, in a sense, will be reimbursed of almost a million dollars annually for those expenses. So, something else we're, we're very excited about. Another piece of this is, as Brian mentioned, it's going to be a merchant agreement. We now have basically kind of a fixed price for disposal. So, I don't know how many times you've all been asked, "How much does it cost to dispose of it at Covanta?" And there's this, "Well, you get this three-hundred-page invoice, and well, it's, we now can say, here's our number. This is what it is." So it's, I think it's a lot more clarity for everybody and, and a better understanding of what's happening within our system.
Questions? Comments?
I actually do have a, a comment or a concern, because in the past, we've actually had, we've had, in the contract, you, you will not bring certain waste into this facility. This language, the way I read it, it, it's a little bit different than that. It's saying that we're going to bring acceptable waste to the facility, and we won't bring prohibited waste to the facility, but it doesn't look like it prohibits them from bringing prohibited waste to the facility. Is that incorrect?
I believe the waste that they process from Marion County, including out-of-county waste, is covered by the definitions. And the definitions, including out-of-county waste, include the prohibited waste, which I believe includes the waste you're concerned about.
But the, the prohibited waste definition is, is, it's based on the judgment of the company, right? So it says-
It's very specific.
We don't have the current contract in our packet. There's an adjustment.
No, but I, the, the prohibited waste shall include the following material if present concentrations or quantities that, in the reasonable judgment of the company, would pose a substantial threat to health and safety, may cause air quality or water afluence standards be violated, are so large or bulky to present a risk, or would result in ash residue from the facility being hazardous. Right? That language didn't change. So we're still taught, we're, we're still, there's still certain, they're not blanket prohibitions, they're saying these things are prohibited if, if they fit into one of these categories.
Well, there's a combination of provisions that apply. The facility, the company is one-hundred percent responsible for compliance with all of their clean air permitting. So, a lot of that control is at the, is on the permitting side and permit compliance side. So if they bring in something that, that results in a permit violation, that's one-hundred percent, that's on their plate, it's, you know, if there's fees or penalties associated with that and corrective action that needs to be made, that's their responsibility. All that is, is squarely addressed in the contract.
Right. But before, we had blanket prohibitions on certain types of material, and this is not a blanket prohibition.
No, this mirrors all of our past language. So, I think you're talking about amendment two that came in in twenty, I'm thinking twenty-fourteen, and the language in this contract mirrors that amendment language.
Okay.
Well, I read the contract, the whole contract the other day.
I'm really glad you did.
I'm, I'm good with the, with the changes we caught, so I want to, I want to say this to staff, and to Jane, and to Brian, you know, everybody who's been working on this thing for a long time. And what I really appreciate about, about this contract, because I know when I first got here, I, I remember reading the contract that we had, and I went, "Who negotiated this deal?" Right? It was like a, a win-lose contract for us. It was like a, a win-lose, uh, contract for us. This one is, is a very good contract. I like that it's only three years, uh, with an option, because, like you said, Brian, things are changing really fast. I really appreciate the, um, I think the citizens really appreciate the efforts that are putting, that, that are being put forth by our haulers and by SWAMAC to find ways to get more material out of the waste system. Because we all know, um, you know, as a master recycler, it's, it's, it's the three Rs, you know? It's reducing, reusing, and then recycling. So, um, if we can get some of this new technology going, the, the MRF that's expanded, uh, we'll be, we'll be using less and less, um, waste. And all of us as citizens need to think about that as we, as we go forward. Buying things that you know you can recycle, um, using bulk foods. You know, I've, I've got my little spice, I think I brought him in here one time, my little spice bottles that I go and, you know, refill, instead of buying a new bottle. So, I think there's things that we can do as citizens, and I want to encourage those that are watching. We're still doing the master recycling training?
Yes. So, uh, Dakota Tengredi is redoing our class right now in cooperation with SWAMAC. Uh, we're really wanting to shift to those top two Rs-
Right.
And, and really focus on the reduce, reuse, and really talk about material management from kind of that cradle to hopefully not grave, in a sense, that we can repurpose, we can reuse, we can avoid that ultimate disposal and, and what that looks like. So, uh, we should have a new rollout here looking towards this fall and in the new year.
Good. That's a great class. I know, uh, I know it'll change because everything changes. So, um, thank you for the work you're doing. Any other questions about the contract?
No. I'm comfortable moving forward with it with the understanding that it, it, we're not changing our policy on this. If we are, my understanding is that we would be able to move forward an amendment, making sure that our, our policy continues as it was.
The policy is identical to what it was before.
Okay.
Can you identify for me SWAMAC? Because I think the average person has no idea what you're talking about. I know what it is, but can you-
Solid Waste Advisory.
Yeah.
Yep. Solid Waste Management Advisory Council. So, our SWAMAC, sorry.
I used it too. Where's, where's the jar?
Yep. Uh, it meets, uh, once a month, uh, to basically provide engagement, uh, with, uh, citizens. We have about half of our council is comprised of citizens at large. Uh, the other half is kind of, uh, experts within the industry. Everything from health to solid waste collection to disposal with a, a member of Cavanta. Kevin Hines from our MRF, uh, sits on there and as long as, as, as well as will, uh, with Gartner Services. So, we've, we've got a good summation of kind of everything involved in our solid waste system. Um, so, we do deep dives. We look at things. We'll be definitely exploring a new, um, management plan. Our management plan has not been updated since 2012, 2009. So, it, it's in need of kind of that rejuvenation to really focus towards, uh, materials management. But that's kind of the, it's kind of the solid waste brain trust that we have in the county to help advise us and, and advise forward.
I think we should put an acronym jar on that table so he can say it every time he comes up here. What does MRF stand for?
So, that, this is the fun one-one. MRF, the M R F, is Material Recovery Facility. Uh, the one we have that we refer to as the MRF is the Marion Resource Recovery Facility, um, basically located on the opposite side of, of I-5 at Brooks, um, as Cavanta. And it processes our construction and demolition debris, kind of the dry waste portion of our waste stream. Um, and as Commissioner mentioned, that, uh, they're going through a major expansion. Um, their facility is going from, uh, 30,000 square foot footprint to an additional 70,000 square foot footprint. Um, and anticipated to increase recovery, um, literally as much as 100% of what they've been doing. So, significant improvements. We'll be able to do a lot better recovery on that side.
I'm excited to see it when it's done. I know there's a tour in the works for us.
Oh, I know. I toured the other one and, uh, here, here comes a snowboard out of the, you know, I thought, well, somebody's throwing away a snowboard. I'd get that one for me.
You can turn it into a shelf.
Yeah. Exactly.
In a kid's room.
In the bunkhouse.
That's right. Uh, Mr. Cherry, move to approve the service agreement with Covanta Marion, Inc. for the supply and processing of solid waste.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right. Thank you. Yes.
If I could, I would really like to thank Jane Veto, uh, for all her work on this project. For the last six months in, uh, driving to this finish line, uh, without her guidance and direction and her, uh, bulldoggingness, I'll say. Uh, we, we really appreciate her efforts and everything she's done. So, thank you very much.
You're here. Yes, Jane, thank you. Great. Thanks, Brian. Did we say, did, did we take the vote?
We didn't.
Okay. So, that ends our normal action items. So, we will open the contract review board. I wanted to jump to that earlier. So, uh, it's under information technology. Consider approval, an order approving, uh, an exemption to Marion County Public Contracting Rules 20-801 D.C. to allow Information Technology Department to extend the term of a contract beyond the sole source notice. Gary, welcome again.
Hello. Uh, so, this is pretty straightforward, um, just like we talked about with GroupWise. We buy GroupWise through a company called SHI. So, in order for us to maintain support for the existing TSG system, we have to have contract. And right now, our contract runs out tomorrow. So, we need to extend the contract. So, uh, right after this session, we have another session where we explain that we're paying the company for support. Why we're paying for support for TSG is pretty simple. Uh, that's the, I can't remember what that stands for. So, you'll have to find me for not knowing the acronym. Uh, TSG is the vendor for the Assessor Tax and Assessment System. We're currently in the process of replacing that system. And we're not going to have full implementation until December of this year. So, we need an extra six months on this contract so that we can finish the implementation. And Camber can talk about the contractual side.
Good morning, commissioners, members of the board. My name is Camber Schleg. I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager within the Finance Department. And Gary and I are here today asking for an exemption to the Marion County Public Contracting Rules Section 20-0800 contract amendments. This section prohibits an amended contract that, that, an amended contract does not have a term total than the great, a total term greater than allowed in the sole source notice after combining the initial and the, um, extended terms. So, this sole source notice in particular was completed in 2019 and it actually expires today. So, by allowing this extension of this contract, um, the Information Technology Department can work with the assessor's office to complete the transition from Tyler Technologies to Helion. And this contract would expire on December 31st, 2021.
Okay. So, Commissioner, we need a motion to approve this exemption.
Mr. Cherry, I move that we, uh, approve an order, approve an exemption to the Marion County Public Contracting Rules 20-801 D.C. to allow Information Technology Department to extend the term of a contract beyond the sole source notice.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. I will co- I will close the contact, contact review board, go back to action item under information technology. Consider approval of amendment number two to purchase order with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the amount of 102,374 dollars for a new contract total of 483,083.89 to provide assessment and taxation software through December 31st, 2021.
So, uh, what we have before you, again, IT has been partnering with the assessor's office for the last two years to replace the existing tax and assessment system with a new product called Helion. Uh, that project actually kicked off in June of 2020. We actually completed the software implementation of May of this year. Uh, there is an ongoing data conversion component. So, even though the software is fully implemented, uh, we're still actively converting data out of the old system into the new system. And what we're asking for today is an extension of the existing maintenance contract through December. And Tom can walk you through, uh, the exact business reasons.
Thanks, Gary.
I'm welcome.
Thank you. For the record, Tom Rolfing, Marion County Assessor. To take care of the acronyms, TSG was, stood for the, uh, the Software Group. Um, that was the name of the system when we purchased it, uh, back in 1996 or '07 for the '97, '98 tax year. And Y2K is a very old system. Uh, the extension of the contract is, 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 as Gary said, to, to get us by while we're, uh, we're finishing with, uh, the completion of our transition to ORCATs. We want to make sure that, uh, that we have all of the information we need going forward. Uh, we, we don't miss something in the conversion process. I think it's, it's pretty straightforward. And this, and this keeps the, uh, the maintenance from T, from the company, from the vendor going. If, if we need help getting, getting to any of our data, so.
Good. So, you're gonna, you're gonna have this done by December 31st? I know it's been a long, long haul, right?
Yeah. We're currently on track. Project's going great. We have a good working relationship with the new vendor and we actually have a pretty good relationship, uh, with the existing vendor. Uh, again, this is just for, in case of emergency and somebody identifies along the way that, oops, we forgot some data. We have to have maintenance on that system to be able to pull it out and then convert it. So, uh, yes, we're on track. I believe, uh, roll turn is the official blessing of the new system and it becomes the new system of record. So, as soon as roll turn's completed this year, uh, we should be done with this project.
Great. So, um, you guys have a lot of work. I just wanted, uh, before we take this motion, I wanted to, um, Tom knows how to get a conversation going with the county commissioner. Just park in their spot.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes. That would get our attention. Yes.
More than one way.
At least he has a cool car.
Yeah. It was a cool car. Okay. Back to the subject here. Who is this?
Me.
All right.
All right. Mr. Cherry, move to approve amendment number two to the purchase order with Tyler Technologies, Inc. in the amount of 102,374 dollars for a new contract total of 483,083.89 to provide assessment and taxation software support through December 31st, 2021.
I second the motion.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much.
How are we doing on, uh, 464? Well, I guess we get our, get our board order together first, huh?
We're, we're expecting you to, to want to meet with us sometime.
Yeah. Like, we want to get that done. All right. Thank you. All right. We are done with our, um, action items. Anybody want to discuss? Or, uh, I guess we can read the calendar. I know, uh, where is it? I'll read it while you're signing. Commissioner did the last duty. So, we're here, obviously, for the board session, uh, later today at 10:00 a.m. Board of Commissioners, Chief Administrative, well, after this, um, not at 10:00. It's going to be right after this executive session if needed. Uh, right here in the, upstairs in the Commissioner's Boardroom, later today at 1:30, Service District, uh, Adopt Budget Hearing and Semi-Annual Bud Meeting for Brooks, Fargo, LaBish, and Ilhie, here in the Commissioner's Boardroom at 1:30. And again, today at 4:00, uh, FEMA briefing for local officials. I believe, uh, Jan, we probably won't be there. Okay. So, you can do that one. Yeah. Um, and then we will be at the swearing-in ceremony for, um, Justice of the Peace over in, uh, the Justice Court at 466 Portland Road Northeast at 4:00 tomorrow, Thursday, the 1st of July. Wow. Economic Development, at 9:30, Economic Development Coordinator interviews here in the Commissioner's Boardroom and 555, uh, yeah, upstairs at the floor. Tomorrow at 2:00 p.m., Economic Development in Cities at the Commissioner's Boardroom here on the fifth floor. And then Monday, the 5th, we're closed in observance of, uh, Independence Day. And Tuesday at 9:30, Management Update, uh, here in the Commissioner's Boardroom. That's the 6th. And then again, on the 6th, Tuesday at 12:00 noon, Economic Development in the Cities here in the Commissioner's Boardroom on the fifth floor. Again, Tuesday, the 6th, at 2:30, Health and Community Services Policy Group, uh, here at the Commissioner's Boardroom on the fifth floor. Wednesday, we're back here at 9:00 a.m. on the 7th. And at noon on the 7th, Woodburn, Marion County, meeting virtual. I'm just gonna keep, I'm not gonna sign anything so I won't get them messed up there.
Okay. Are you guys ready for an exciting weekend?
Oh. I'm gonna have to come back to work to rest.
I know. There's a lot going on. I was just creating a list of invitations for all of us and we can't be all the places, but-
I've got, uh, seven adults, three grandsons, and a dog coming to my place for the weekend.
There you go.
So, I'm gonna be like Commissioner Willis, he needs to come back to work to just-
That's my everyday. There's no dog.
You could borrow mine.
I appreciate the offer.
I have two. Love it. We're gonna be up at the lake this weekend and we have to drug one of them because the fireworks, she's a complete mess. She just like, can't handle it no matter where she is. And so, our vet gives us some type of tranquilizer, I think it is, so she can just be high, pretty much, for two days because the fireworks just mess her up really bad.
You know, my dog just passed away this year, Cooper. I could have her in a duck blind, shoot a shotgun, and she'd boom, go get birds. Didn't bother her at all, but oh, boy, when lightning or thunder hit and she was in the house, she'd shake and cower. Oh, that's so sad.
It is sad. Our poor little dog. Last year, we had her in our trailer. We had the air, air running on high, so it's kind of noisy. And then we turned on, her, she likes cartoons. She watches cartoons with my kids. And her favorite Disney cartoon is, well, it's Pixar, is Cars. And so, she'll sit and watch the whole show. So, we turned it on and turned up the speakers as loud as possible and wrapped her in a, a heavy blanket. So, she has a weighted blanket and put her in the bathtub with the door open. And she can see the T, in that trailer, she could see the TV from the bathtub, in the bathroom. And she pretty much just drooled her way through the TV show for the fireworks.
That's an interesting story.
Yeah. She, it's, we had to show people because they didn't believe us. Like, come see what she does. And she just, she'll watch.
Kind of dog is she?
She is a, um, Bernese Mountain Dog Boxer mix. So, she's small, like a boxer, but she's really soft and fuzzy and she has the markings of a Bernese. So, she's black, white, and brown. She's the cutest dog ever. She's a rescue. She had issues when we got her. And so, we do what we can to keep her happy. But there's all kinds of events, like I was mentioning. St. Paul Rodeo starts today.
Are you gonna go?
I am going. Crystal's working on what that means because they had been in contact with us. And I've been to the rodeo, but I've never been in this capacity. That mean exactly.
I went, uh, let's see, last year we didn't have us COVID, the year before. I've gone, I've gone a couple times, but two years prior to that, uh, I went. And that was, that was the first time I've been back in a long time. And I enjoyed it. I'm not gonna go this year.
I'm excited. I have, um, I'm excited to bust out my cowgirl attire. I have a really great hat from my younger days, a straw hat. I'm doing it. I'm going.
Well, I just want to wish everybody, uh, safe. Fourth, uh, I know that we are really concerned about, uh, illegal fireworks. And I know the sheriff put out some information and, um, warning people that we're not-
This is your warning.
This is your warning. We're not gonna mess with the illegal fireworks. And those people that, um, you know, we, we want to celebrate our freedoms, but just be very, very careful if you're using fireworks at all. They are doing the fireworks over the lake. And I don't have concern about that because those are professionals and they have fire engines there and all that stuff ready to go. So, hopefully, that'll be a good event. And I don't know if Mill City's doing theirs.
They are. I got an invitation to their event. It's on Saturday. And then Staten also is doing, um, 4th of July activities. I, I won't be able to attend, but maybe Commissioner Willis and his family will be there. I don't know.
I think we're gonna be out of town.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, there's a lot. I think there's plenty of things for folks to do. I just encourage everyone to be responsible and respectful of your neighbors. Not everybody loves fireworks. So, try to enjoy as much as you can. I think it's gonna be fantastic. There's a parade in Detroit on Saturday morning.
I know.
We're in it.
A golf cart parade.
It's a, it's an animal walking-
Oh, good, because my golf cart's got a flat tire. Oh, good, because my golf cart's got a flat tire.